Welcome to Fleet News Group Podcast. Today I'm talking via Skype with Dundee, Scotland's Fraser Crichton. As Corporate Operations Fleet Manager at Dundee Council, Fraser has been at the forefront of implementing electric vehicles and infrastructure at the local authority and winning awards along the way. Welcome Fraser.
Welcome, delighted to be here.
Now, I've been doing some research, of course, on Dundee and I see that you've got more than 200 electric vehicles and that Dundee is a bit of a star for EVs in Europe as one of the greener places and notably for public transport and its innovative charging hubs. So firstly, I thought it'd be great for you to tell us about the geography and the size of the local council area you look after and what the fleet and its task is.
Yeah, so first of all Dundee, if everyone is unclear of Scotland itself, is basically halfway between Aberdeen and Edinburgh on the east coast. Its population is 150,000, but you kind of touched on it. One of the unique things about Dundee is the topography. So it is, the actual size of it is eight miles by five miles. So it's a very condensed city and it's, but it sits on a volcanic, what's called the volcanic seat. You're wondering why I'm telling this story, but it's actually, it's the topography. It actually acts like a bowl. So we sit in this sort of bowl. So my, this journey, moving over to electric vehicles started over 13 years ago. Probably see, that's why I've got so many grey hairs. But the, the, the why the story on the, on the topography of the city is that all the transportation, roughly about 38% of the pollution, air pollution in the city is caused by transportation. And the difference where most cities in the world, et cetera, it, the, all this pollution has got somewhere to go. But this topography, as I just talked about, sitting in a bowl, it just like sits like a soup in the city unfortunately because of the way, the way, the way the topography is. So the, way back then, 13 years ago, I went to an air quality meeting and discovered all these issues that we, we had with transportation. And at that point I went, I had four young children, Dundee's my city. And I just thought, we're going to have to change this. We're going to have to do something about this. So that was the, the start of the journey. As you've touched on, I mean, this, I've moved slowly but surely. Moving my vehicles as a fleet, I've got a fleet of roughly about 850 vehicles on the road and as a local authority. And that goes from a, a small van all the way up to refuge vehicles, sweepers, et cetera, so a wide range. So I think I'm actually close to about 270 vehicles now. Since, so we're, we're accelerating very quickly. But obviously a key element to that is infrastructure, as you touched on. And on that, I, I, you'll probably, as we go through this podcast, you know how I get obsessed by things? And instead of just sitting with my fleet, I thought, well, I can, I can only do a small proportion of cleaning up the air quality in the city. And so I'm really going to have to do this holistically across the city. So I'm really going to have to look at infrastructure for catering for the private sector, the other public bodies like the NHS, the police, et cetera. And, and what does that look like? What does that infrastructure look like in, in the city? So it's been a, a journey and I'm, you know, quite happy to go in depth into various elements like the electric RCVs, like the sweepers or some of the innovative infrastructure projects. But what I would like to think we can get the key theme through this is renewable energy, which is the key to all this and where I think certainly Australia can benefit from. You've got a bit of sun out there. I, I know you do because I, I lived out there for two and a half years, a long time ago, 30 years ago. So I'm aware that the, the potential is, is there for renewable energy. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to the rest of this podcast.
Yeah, no, I've got a lot of questions and one that just sort of popped into my head was how you said that you've taken on sort of like the whole county to help provide the infrastructure for people that may be outside your remit. So yeah, let's come back to that theme at some point too. But I mentioned in the intro that you, I see that you've been scooping up awards. So you personally were named among so-called Green Fleet's Top 100 Most Influential in Green Transport. Dundee Council was recently named Top Public Transport Authority at an EV Innovation and Excellence Awards. And then you also got named for having one of the best five green charging hubs in Britain. So you've already told us when you started on the EV transition. And I'm just wondering sort of like initially, if you can go back that 13, I think you said it was 13 or 15 years, how you initially sort of started to bring about the transformation? Because we still have a lot of people here that are just starting.
Yeah, okay, I'll try and condense this really quickly to this, that 13 years. But if I'm going to go back to the start, the key for, for me was the introduction of the Nissan Leaf into the, you know, I hadn't seen any other vehicle that really could do the job of a diesel vehicle until the Nissan Leaf came along. And so that is where the 13 years comes from, because that was where it was introduced. It was classically how I, I started was four chargers and four Nissan Leafs. That's how it began and I did a trial for two, three months to understand it. And then started slowly adding a few. I then got involved in the taxi industry. I tested taxi industry, not just for Dundee, but for Angus, which is a neighbouring authority. And I started getting taxis interested in electric vehicles. And from that, it kind of snowballed. And as I said, probably two years into that, I had that moment of going, we can only do so much to make the difference here. And at that point, I started looking at a strategy across the whole city. And that then developed to, to the wider region as well. So to put, to put, to understand that, we started, I was lucky enough to go to other places in the world like Norway, who are, who are very much leaders in this field. I was in other places like Barcelona and, and other European cities, et cetera. And, and just gathering information and how, what sort of technology was available at that time. And as we know, technology is going so fast just now. So it was just all about, when people ask me about our strategy, our strategy just every six months was a change in feast because you just had to adapt to what was coming. So the hubs, charging EV hubs were the very beginning of what I would say was our holistic strategy. And with that, we also looked at, my point about looking at this as a whole city was that we intentionally didn't just go for the affluent area and start putting our infrastructure in the affluent area. We went for areas of the sort of students, we've got student, big student population. We've got an area of working class sort of communities. And we built our first charging hub there. So, and again, from the very beginning, as I talked right at the start here, we looked at solar energy with battery storage to not fully, at that, at this point for the, for the energy, but 50% of the energy. So we built ultimately three of these chargers, one in the city centre, one in the east. And then we went to the affluent area in the west and we built them across the city. And once, all through this, we start, you start developing and you start understanding what you can and can't do. And the third one, by the time we got to the third one, we, it wasn't actually called that at the time, but it's now known as a multimodal hub. Where we built a hub next to the railway station, bus stop, the cycling and walking route all the way in the city centre. So ultimately what we want to do, all the vehicles coming from the rural areas, we want them, they're coming into the city centre, we're the urban heart. So what they do is they leave the, the vehicles at the hub and then take the other modes of transport into the city. So anyone that's been to Scotland knows that that's all very well. It's all lovely and it works in the summertime. But sometimes in the wintertime, the, the rain is coming at right angles to you. And by the time you get to that train, your fingers are blue. So we understood again that maybe people coming into the city will not want to stop their vehicle, go and get another mode of transport into the city, especially in the wintertime. So what we then developed was the next line of defence, which was the, we've got four multi-storey car parks around the outside of our city centre. And we've, I started then putting infrastructure into them, again with renewable energy, now with Tesla battery storage. So if, in a multi-storey car park, if you come in there to charge, then you will get the solar that's been generated the day before. And then if it's not getting used at all, that, that energy goes to the barrier system. It goes to lighting. It's always looking to, to utilise the renewable energy piece of it. I roll on, I went to the third one and I sold the entire roof of the car park, meaning I've got enough energy just to build on what we've got. And then the fourth one that we're, multi-storey car park is, at the moment, it's a 17 million pound project. And that is combining EV charging with cycling, with all the other modes of transport all in one site. So it's, it's quite a, a, a evolution as you go by and as the infrastructure changes as well. So what I would say, I always say this to anybody, you've just got to start small and then just build, but understand what you're, what you're trying to achieve. And ultimately what we were trying to achieve is, I talked about 150,000 population. We built the first Victorian Albert Museum outside London in 2018. And in 2019, 1.1 million people came to visit that museum. So you could imagine the transport impact that has. So going back to the, all, all the discussions on the infrastructure strategy, it, it becomes the understanding that if we have vehicles coming in from the west of the city and we, we really want them to come in from the east, we will put the infrastructure on those, that multi-storey car park. We'll maybe charge them five times the tariff. And on the one and the other side of the city, we'll give it for free. So ultimately what we've now got is we are manipulating the transportation system through parking and charging. And that's the bigger piece, strategy of, of how, how we've gone about things. And then I can talk about the, the fourth hub, which is, fourth and fifth hubs, which are now even more innovation later on.
Wow, what an adventure and so holistic. I wonder how you like measure the impact? So you're talking about you, the stimulation for the whole sort of thing was to get better air quality. So is there a measure of air quality today that shows that you've done something fantastic?
Yeah, so we've, we've reduced the air quality in the last six years by 8%. So that number that I've got them sitting up there, which was 38%, is getting close to 30% now. So probably when I talked about, the other problem that we've got is we've got extremely narrow streets because it's a very old city. So they're, they were certainly not built for buses and, and, and coaches and things going through the middle of the city. So yeah, so, so we've got air quality monitoring throughout the city. Again, to understand that a lot, most places, most cities in the world have air quality management areas, which are, they're, they're hotspots, as you would say, of, of pollution. The, the issue in Dundee is we had to make the whole city, the entire city, an air quality management area. The pollution was that bad, as I described. So 8% is, it might not seem a lot, but it is quite significant. You know, you've 8% of nasty, toxic air has been reduced in the city, you know? So it is, it is significant and it's coming down constantly as we, I'll put this in the context. I'll, on my fleet alone, every time I change over a refuge vehicle, that is, reduces my annual diesel costs by 1%. So I've, I've just put in eight of these electric Ben-Lauris and that is 8% reduction in our diesel. So things like that make a, a huge difference.
So while you've been sort of dedicated to bringing about better air quality, I also noted that something you've been getting accolades for recently is this novelty of pure rainwater on tap for customers at some big charging hub. So I haven't been to Dundee, I know you're famous for your Dundee cake. How will you also be renowned for your pure water? Like what's it all about? What's this whole water thing about? How did it come about? How has it been received by consumers?
Yeah, so, so the, this is part of what I said earlier on, which is the innovation piece where, and when you start, so I'll go back even the second hub we built. We built all the, you know, instead of u- using normal materials for building the hubs, when the engineers are getting involved, when you're starting to understand that we're, we're trying to change our environment, the, the plinths, the, the concrete plinths all around the, the second hub are actually second, or renew, renewable plastic bottles. They're actually plastic bottles that have been recycled all the way around the, the site. So that's the sort of thinking when you start getting involved in this. So many people go, well, have you thought of this? You thought of that? I, I've been involved in, in many projects, including around the region with all this. And one of the, the major, you know, tourist attractions is, is golf around about here. As you're probably aware, St Andrews is just 15 minutes up the road from here.
I've heard that of the golf.
Yeah, so I, I've been, we're talking to the environmental guy for the RNA, who run Open and runs St Andrews, et cetera, for many, many years. And he, they got involved with a company called Blue Water. And I was at a conference about four, four, five years ago. And he described about how much water, how much plastics are in our water today. So going through our tap system, you turn on the tap in the UK. I'm not 100% sure about Australia, but definitely in the UK. We roughly eat a credit card of plastic a week drinking out of our water system. That is a scary, scary, when you put it in your head. So that's always stuck with me. And, and this company called Blue Water came along, they went to the RNA. And, and when I was building the fourth hub, I obviously had an ideal area because I've got solar canopies as I described on top of these chargers. So it was an idea, ideal area for capturing the water. So what is in, you, you, ultimately what we've got is people coming up to charge at our latest charging hub. The water, rainwater, it sometimes rains in Dundee. The rainwater hits the solar canopy. It then goes into, it goes through a filtration system. And then each of the hubs, there are two, two watering stations. So you take your renewable plastic bottle, when you go to charge up, you can then go and take, get the tap water, which has gone nowhere near the drainage water system. So nowhere near the, the, the plastics, et cetera. And that is all about another environmental impact of, of building hubs. So that if we're looking at building, say 10 hubs across the city, every quarter, half a kilometre, we will have fresh drinking water for, for everybody in Dundee. So it's just another piece. Also at that hub, we've, we've looked at, one of the things that we, we actually got challenged on from our, our leadership here was accessibility. So we looked at normal garages, normal diesel and petrol and petrol garages of today. And we're quite shocked with the fact that very little is done to cater for people that, with disabilities. Now that disability could be their eyesight, it can be they're in a wheelchair, it can be arthritis. There are so many different elements here. And at the moment, it, certainly in the UK, that, that sort of core community of our, of our society is not catered for when they're fueling up. In fact, doing our, you know, going out and speaking to this, these groups, we found that on a Monday and a Friday, they just wouldn't fuel up because they got so much abuse because they took so long to, to fuel up and, and people didn't like that. So it was quite a, a, a eye-opening scenario that we found ourselves in where we were starting from square one. So, so what we did was then we, we don't have plinths on our chargers. So they're lower, the lighting is certainly different. We've got bump stops so that wheelchairs can, can work in it. We've got retractable reels for the chargers. So it's all about catering for everyone and not missing anybody out saying, look, you, I'm sorry, you've got arthritis, you can't drive an EV. So yeah, so that was all combined into one. For that site as well, I've got one of the biggest, and I would think this is worldwide, one of the biggest issues is the actual cost of putting in new energy source. So a new substation, that energy cost is, is the, the, the big one when you're starting these projects. And what I then developed was on that site that I've just described, this hub with the, what has all the disabled charging infrastructure and the water. I've also built right next to it, charging infrastructure for my construction depot, which is roughly about 280 vehicles. So that's all on one site. It's separated left and right, but it means I only have to have one upgrade. So, and it cares for two. And then roll this on, I, I, I went, as you can hear, I, I take things like a sore stomach. I then decided that we were not going back to diesel and petrol. So I, I ripped out the, the existing fuel tanks. I removed them and said, this, this has got to end. You're not getting any diesel because I'm taking the fuel source, the tanks out. So I took them out and then somebody told me, by the way, that was the reserve for emergencies, fuel for fire brigade, the police, et cetera. So I went, oh gods, right, okay. So ultimately, and this was my thinking anyway. So building all this solar on top of all this infrastructure that I've described, then goes into a connected energy solution, which is Second Life Batteries, which is your Renault Zoe's Second Life all stacked up. So now on that site, I have roughly about 800 kilowatts stored constantly of electricity through the renewable energy. And that allows me, as I've talked about in the numbers that I've given out of my fleet. So all my meals on wheels vans in the city are all electric. Now, if those, that we have an electric, if a shortage goes down, then the old people in Dundee don't get their, their meals because we don't have any electricity. So therefore I have to have that resilience piece. If I, if, if the old people don't have their meals, I think they'll come out and live in Sydney, to be honest. Because obviously that's how serious it is if, if you don't have that resilience.
Wow, fantastic. Yeah, I've never sort of gone down that angle of catering for people with any sort of disabilities. So that's fantastic to hear. So infrastructure here in Australia is a big concern because we've been a bit late to adopt the EV technology, but it's happening very fast now. So I think you've given us some really good insights. Are there any other lessons about charging infrastructure that, you know, we might sort of glean from you?
So, so I've, actually last week I was speaking to Adelaide Council and I understand where you are and where you've got to get to. So I've, I've got a wee bit of insight and also having lived out there, I know it's slightly sunny at, at times. So I, I, I'm in the same boat here. So what we've got to avoid, certainly in Scotland, is we've got to avoid just letting the private industry just come in and put the charging infrastructure in. I'm not against private, don't get me wrong, I've got nothing, I'm, I'm not saying we, we don't need the, we need the money. We need the, the private investment. But what we, you have to avoid is a scenario in, in Scotland of if all the cities like Edinburgh, Glasgow, Aberdeen and Dundee, a private investor will come into those urban areas and they will invest because they see the return. What ultimately happens is all the rural areas surrounding that urban area will be left out because there is no real return on that. Or putting charge infrastructure on street charging is another one on our streets. Now, the council owns the streets. We're never going to get away from putting all this infrastructure in without us, our involvement. So I think there has to be some sort of partnership. And sometimes that can be quite difficult, public-private partnership. But I think that is the best way to go forward. And for me, I'll bang the drum again. Australia is in that brilliant position where you can use renewable energy all day long with all the sun that you've got. And if, if, I, I now am in a position where I'm going into a private-public partnership to, to take this to the next level. And my remit is to provide that renewable energy piece. Because I, just to put this in the context, my, a Ben-Lauri, for our own sake, a refuge vehicle I have got needs 300 kilowatts, a 300 kilowatt battery. I've got eight of them, I see, on one site. If I don't have renewable energy supporting that, I'll start to put the lights out in Dundee. You know, it's, it's, you know, when you get, look at those numbers, we need to, that, I'm banging that drum about the renewable energy. And I think Australia is in a fantastic position to, 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 you know, capture all, all, all the, the resources that you have. And, and certainly Sydney, I, I, I lived there for six months. I, I would start taking certain areas rather than trying, I know I've talked about my holistic one, but I started on, as I said, one area and then move on to the next area and move on to the extra. Rather than just see if you try and take this all in a winner. By the time you're finished writing out your strategy, it's all old technology as, as well. I would, the other thing that I do, all these projects I talk about is put over capacity. So you make sure that you've got enough energy so that you can build on what you have. Because as we've seen over the years, everybody thought 50 kilowatts was the, the golden egg and it was absolutely fantastic. And you wake up in the morning and somebody's got a 350 kilowatt charger. So you need to make sure that you've got enough capacity going forward. I also think we have to get a mindset away from, they, we, what we do just now is we go there and we charge up in a hub or a, or a garage just now. Let's just replace it with that. I think that, that where we, where we've found is that there's all different solutions across, as I said, charging from home, to me, for, for me, at this moment in time, I'm eight pence a kilowatt charging from home. Why, why would I go to the charging hub? Because it's so, so much dearer. And then on-street solutions. So we, we've got what we, what's called a pop-up chargers. There's a company called Urban Fox, where we've had issues with street furniture. You're in your, in, in the middle of your city, you've got, they've got enough stuff there as it is with benches and everything like that. So these, the, so we, we did put some chargers in the, in our pavements that, to begin with, way back. But now what we've got is we've worked with this company where the actual charger is in the ground. So it's actually in your pavement and it only initiates when you get your app and your satellite and you bring it out the ground, you charge your car. Once it's finished, 70 seconds or whatever, it goes back into the ground. Now, we've, we're a way put, we're at the moment, we've got another 18 of these. We're putting in the ground, we'll have about 50 of them by the end of the year. Now, the, the, the benefit of that is if you've got vandalism, it's very difficult to vandalise something that's in the ground. Also, if you go to some affluent areas where they don't want unsightly chargers, the opposite is that it's, they, they're not ruining, they say they're a nice park. And ultimately though, if the charger for some reason is broken, an engineer comes along, takes four bolts out, takes the charger out, puts a new one in, puts it back again and goes and fixes it. So your downtime is extremely low. And which brings me on to the key to the, all my charging infrastructure is, are anywhere in the world. If you put it in the ground, it's only as good as if it's working. So you've got to have a unbelievable service and maintenance programme to make sure all this charging infrastructure that you are putting in the ground works. Because what I've seen over the last four or five years is all these great projects, put them in the ground and then they stop working for whatever reason and you just turn up as a, a user and the charger's not working. It's a pointless exercise. So given where I am, I've roughly about 98% of all my infrastructure is working at all times. I have two engineers in the city. We, we, I, I know I drift on a bit, but we also have coaches that have set up a coach company, an electric coach called Ember Company. And they started off and Dundee have now got, I think it's close to 35 coaches. And they all charge in the city and they, a lot of students going back and forward. Now, if that infrastructure is not working, then the coach is not charged and then we're in big trouble. in big trouble. So that piece about making sure that the maintenance and servicing is up to standard, I mean, we have got a downtime on those coach chargers of one hour. If that charger goes down, our contract is within an hour that's sorted. That gives you an idea of what you have to do once you get this, the whole thing up and running.
Just from that, I'm just curious, like, where do you get your renewable energy? Do you have geothermal thing as you're sitting in some volcanic bowl?
So yeah, we have a mixture, certainly for my infrastructure on, because it's scattered across the city, solar has certainly been the main one. You just use the buildings, et cetera, and build hubs, build canopies. But we also have our sports centre, for argument's sake, has got twenty six heat pumps, for the very point that you've made, taking the heat out. So that whole infrastructure for that sports centre is under saw heat pumps. We also have, unfortunately, we, for fifty years, we used to make tyres for cars. Michelin used to make them in Dundee. They've actually left, but we've now got Innovation Park and Michelin themselves have not left as far as investment's concerned. And at that site, we've got wind turbines. We actually have in the city, wind turbines on the outskirts of our city. Again, we've been using that sort of energy as well. And certainly Dundee University has been looking at also tidal, we've got the River Tay, which is extremely tidal, right on our doorstep, and they've been looking at trying to capture some of that energy as well. So we're looking at all these different solutions.
Wow, you've got a real mix going on. Just, I guess this will be like my last question, but in Australia, again, we've seen how a change of government and a change of policy around EV has impacted adoption. And early, we're at about eight percent of new car sales in twenty twenty-three, up from one percent to its point in twenty twenty-one. And we've got people forecasting a doubling to fifteen percent this year. I'm just wondering what the, if you know what the proportion is in Scotland and what's the outlook for EV growth and what's helping and what's hindering that uptake?
Yeah, you're right. So ultimately, there's a couple of things run here as far as driving it forward. Definitely the government targets that were set a good while ago, and the Scottish government, for argument's sake, took a couple of years off the UK targets. So again, that's a big driving force and you set that. And that's a positive. The negative behind that is they changed the goalposts, they changed the targets. You know, you keep moving the targets back and forward, you know, customers of buying EVs go, wait a minute, why have they said that by twenty thirty-two, we're going to be all EVs and now they're going to say it's twenty forty? That's kind of, in my opinion, a negative, so that doesn't help. But definitely driven by targets. On a personal note, I think our local leadership has also driven this. So I've got a really young administration, councillors that are elected members that really push me forward. And that's great, but it also causes disparity across the country. So in Dundee, as we're talking about, we've got loads and loads of charge infrastructure. You go up to Aberdeen, which is only seventy miles up the road, which is traditionally oil-based, et cetera, it does not have anywhere near the same amount of EVs because it's got a different issue around moving away and the pace. So what you end up is, there's not the same spread across the city, sorry, the country that you probably want, there's a disparity there. However, I think that, given the size of Scotland, that we're in a position that we probably can join the dots up. But I think that's what every country's going to be the same. It might be Sydney, it might be Perth, but Melbourne might not be going at the same rate. How do you then join that together? By showing them what you've done and the benefits of it, I think. So I can't also talk enough about communication with, and this sounds, why would you not do that? It sounds, it thinks, is something like your podcast, getting the messages out there to people, because there's so many stories about these electric vehicles blowing up and they're terrible and they're bad. There's still a lot of stuff of misinformation or lack of knowledge that still exists big time out there. We in Scotland are probably still decelerating to about eighteen percent. I would think that Dundee is heading towards that very right now, whereas, as I said, Glasgow might be only at ten percent. But generally, you're talking about, but it comes, what I've found is also, it comes in leaps and then it slows down a bit and then goes again. And all behind that is communication. And just on Dundee, we have a, we try every couple of months to put a double page spread in our local newspaper, just to tell the people what we're doing with our projects going forward, why we're doing it, what the benefits are. Then you take all the flack back, some of it is positive and some of it's negative. But, you know, that communication piece, when we built the hub, the first hub, I think more people in Amsterdam knew what we did than they were in Dundee. And people were going past in the bus going, I wonder what that nice looking thing is? But they had no idea what it was. And I was in Amsterdam telling everybody, oh, this is what we built, et cetera. So we did, we had a lot of learning to do to understand. We had a focus group, I use this one all the time, we have got a focus group just to find out what people think and we're doing the right thing. So when it comes to the building these projects, we don't get too much flack because everybody knows. But on these questions, you still even get today, a guy saying, do I need to carry a can of electricity in my boot of my electric vehicle? Now, I obviously said, for God's sake, do not carry a can of electricity, please. But you understood his thought process, which was, I do it for petrol, do I need to do it for an electric vehicle? And I just think all that communication piece for driving these numbers up and the targets up is crucial as we go forward. And as I said to you, I've got local elected members, the Lord, sorry, the leader of the administration here, a guy called John Alexander, kind of visionary, he back in twenty eighteen, got his wife and his diesel cars and got rid of them and bought a second-hand Nissan Leaf in twenty eighteen and said to the public of Dundee, I'm doing this, come and join us, this is what we've got to do. So when you've got leadership like that, it's like gold dust.
Well, Fraser, it sounds like you are a very deserving, award-winning leader. Thank you so much for taking the time to talk to our podcast and our audience. Lots of fantastic insights and great lessons for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
You've been listening to Fleet News Group Podcast. It was edited and produced by Isabella Fiorentino. You can follow us on Spotify, just search for Fleet News Group. We're also on Instagram, Facebook and YouTube. Our website is fleetnewsgroup.com, where you can get all of our stories, videos and podcasts. Until next time, drive safely and take care.